Good evening, welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of Crescent City. It is Monday, May 17th, and we are calling this meeting to order. And Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Burns.
Present.
Councilmember Slert.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Mayor Shalom.
I'm here, thank you. Uh, let's see. Ms. Westfall, would you please, uh, where'd she go?
She left.
Oh. Ms. Murray, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have just come out of closed session. Mr. Black, could you please report out any final actions taken?
Yes ma'am, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you. We have, uh, no acknowledgements this evening, so I'm gonna move right on into business. And we have a consent calendar approval of the regular minute, meeting, meeting minutes of May 3rd, warrant claims paid for the period of May 4th through the 17th, bi-weekly payroll reports, and our up-to-date March general ledger from our Finance Department. And in this corner, this thing's echoing, I feel like I'm in the middle of a boxing ring. Uh, from Mr. McDonald, can I, uh, was there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, uh, can I get a motion to approve?
Okay. On page, uh, 5, eight lines down in the second, probably third paragraph at the top.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it refers to contract, and I think the word is "contract."
I'm on page 8, I don't see it.
Contact with change. Yeah, with change orders. Right under bidder.
Oh, I'm on the wrong page, sorry. Okay, sorry.
And then, um, also on that page, the third paragraph at the bottom, there's a motion by myself, and second by myself. I thought you did an excellent job.
Yeah. Well done, Charles. Anything else?
Remember who did the second on that?
If I may, I can listen to the, I can listen to the recording and get that recorded for you guys.
Sure.
You got on page, uh, 6, uh, about 12 lines from the bottom on the far right. The first two industries are contracting, and said "made job," I think it should be how, uh, how many jobs.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Anything else, council? Okay, can I get a second with the amended changes, please?
All second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five to zero. We're going to adjourn to the Housing Authority. And please note that all five board members are present. Is there any public comment on housing issues? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and...
We're on RDA.
We're, we're on housing right now, honey. Honey? Uh, we'll have general public comment shortly. That's okay. Um, consent calendar, uh, for the minutes of something 2010. Robin?
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you say that again?
I think that was April 5th.
Sorry. Consent calendar for housing, there's no date for the minutes.
Oh my goodness.
April 5th, though.
Just, if you could just note that.
Thank you.
And warrant claims for April 6th to May 17th. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. We have no new housing business this evening, so we will adjourn to RDA. And all five board members are present, and, uh, is there any public comment on RDA? Mr. Miles?
My name's Richard Miles, and I happen to be a resident of the city, not a resident of the county, because a lot of the people from the county like to come here and express their views. I'm wondering, since two of your members are considering giving the Chamber of Commerce some money out of redevelopment, if they would consider giving me some money out of redevelopment. And I'll tell you what I'd do with it. The area around the clock belongs in the redevelopment area. If you guys would give me a thousand dollars, I would plant four trees there, and plant lavender, and make the clock area where a bunch of people tore out the bushes really look nice. Now, if you're gonna throw around money, why don't you throw some my way? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on redevelopment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and move on to the consent calendar for the minutes of May 3rd, and warrant claims, May 4th through the 17th.
I move to approve the consent calendar items.
Second that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. Uh, we have no, uh, new business items or public hearings this evening. Mr. Butler, do you have anything to report?
Just the rather sad news, Madam Agency Chair, that, uh, the chair and I both had to sign a check for $306,000 last Monday. We waited until Friday, May 4th, when the court, Sacramento Superior, Superior Court Judge Connolly made his decision regarding whether the state's grab of local redevelopment agency money was going to be allowed. Uh, he did allow that based on his decision. It's being appealed by the California Redevelopment Association, but, uh, we, the judge's order was for local agencies to go ahead and pay their share, and to make sure that that was in by Monday, May 10th. So, we, uh, printed the check up on Monday, and I hand-delivered it after both the agency chair and I signed it. So, very, very painful, real, 306,000 reasons why the situation in Sacramento is, whereas funding and the relationship, the fiscal relationship between Sacramento and local agencies is very messed up and needs to be corrected, and, uh, we'll be coming forward later on this year with some suggestions for our residents on how to educate themselves about, uh, things that are in the works, uh, that may provide some additional protection for local agencies throughout California, that will be on the ballot this fall. But, uh, I know that we've talked about that possible loss of revenue over the last six months, and that decision did come down from the judge on Friday, May 4th, uh, Friday, May 7th, and, uh...
May 4th.
That's right, it was the 4th, and then on Monday, the 10th, we actually had to deliver the check to the county, so we met our obligation. It's just an obligation we would rather not have had to, uh, take care of.
Yeah, in my weekly reading that I do about redevelopment, um, it was, I felt a little bit better about our $306,000 check when I read that San Diego had it, had to write a check for 165 million. And, uh, also, three cities, Pittsburgh, um, there were two other cities refused to pay. And so, it's an interesting era that we live in. But yeah, $306,000 out of our redevelopment funds just dawned. Thanks for that update, Rod.
Anything from the board? Okay, we will adjourn and reconvene as the regular City Council, and we have, uh, reports this evening. And, uh, just give you a little bit of history about this report. Last year, um, I wanted to bring an idea to this council, which was to involve our youth in our local politics. Not so sure I'd do that today, but, um, I thought it was a good idea that they get involved and see how, uh, local government works, and learn about local government, and maybe would inspire, uh, someone to want to, uh, run for office one day. And, uh, Mr. Clark was in our, uh, meeting that evening, and, and was very interested in that process. So, it's been a while, but he kinda resurfaced, and he's been at Mr. Butler's doorstep every morning, letting him know that he has an interest in what we're doing. And so, uh, Rod sent him on a mission to see how serious he was, and, uh, from what I understand, asked him to go out, and, uh, his first order of business, uh, or piece of homework was to find out what our kids today want to see in Crescent City. And so, I didn't even know that Mr. Butler had done this, but Michael showed up at my office with this, and you can hold it up, with this stack of surveys that he went out and collected, uh, which came to a total of like 226 surveys, where he surveyed that many kids, um, in a matter of just a few days. And, um, so he brought me all these surveys and wanted me to look at them, and I did. And what I told him that we needed for this evening was an executive summary of what those surveys are. So, he came back to me today, and he has his survey, uh, summary to present to us this evening, so I told him I would give him a few minutes of time this evening. So, very proud of you for your perseverance, um, and so, if you wanna go ahead and come to the microphone and give, give us a copy of your results.
You can just give them all to me? Pass them down.
Well, I took my time, all week, at the high school, and I sat with Principal Jan Morehouse, you know, big, tough people, and it was very hard to get hold of them, but I spent my time talking to the PD teachers, teachers, "Hey, count five minutes out of your time." And I talked to forty kids at once, and it was difficult, but I did it. Um, on here, on the list, um, I got, um, I asked the kids what did they wish, ten wishes they want to bring to Dunlop County. And some, and on the number series, there's number one, shopping mall, um, I put, the votes came out, thirty-seven, the kids, I counted thirty-seven out of it, and that's how many the kids want to shop in mall. Um, then I sat with more of them, and I asked them, "Do you guys have any more ideas?" And they gave me more and more ideas. And I sat down for hours in Smith River at the fire station, and the chief sat down with me and helped me doing all this, and he's like, "Wow, I do a lot." But we did it, and we picked down the top ten lists of the youth survey. And if you want me to read some of them, if you want me to, or just, um...
Actually, um, yeah, we can, why don't you just name the top ten?
Okay, top ten is a shopping mall, top two is a community basketball gym, twenty-four seven, um, three is improving the skating, uh, four is In-N-Out Burger, five is a skater rink.
Ice skating.
Yeah, ice skating.
Right.
Um, six is a Sonic Burger, seven is a mini golf park, eight is a youth center to hang out, nine is a better food in schools, and ten is a swimming pool at the high school. And, uh, some other ideas that the other youth bought up from the parents is a Subway sandwiches at school, family fun center, YMCA, a safe place to hang out, a teen dance club, jobs for teens, um, concerts in the park, indoor baseball field. Um, that's some ideas I got. Starting next week is I'm doing another survey, it'll be, it'll be more nicer, and, uh, I got all planned out for next week. Um, and this is ideas by them. Um, I give about 226. Took me about four days, all day, I spent at the high school from eight to four o'clock. Um, so, um, I'll be going to Creston Elk, I hope next week too, and do all the classes from sixth to eighth grade, and I hope I get some very, uh, more ideas what they wish they could bring in Dunlop County. If you guys have any questions.
Any questions for Michael?
I have some questions.
Yes.
How many, um, students are there at the high school?
Um, I was thinking about, well, I never, yeah, yeah, about a thousand.
Wow.
Yes, a small town, so about a thousand.
That's a lot.
But, yeah, but I am planning this week to get all the whole school, so it'll be about a thousand.
You might check in at his school, too.
Oh, at Castle Rock, yes. I talked to Jan Morehouse, and she gave me a thumbs up, permission to go to all the schools, so I got a big list, so, I'm trying to get the town, then go up to Klamath and Smith River, and stuff like that.
So, the most important part of tonight is that Michael, um, took on a mission.
Yes.
And completed it, and learned from it, and, and as he brought me piles of paper, and I made him go back and do more work.
Yes.
Um, he completed that as well, and was really excited to bring this to us tonight.
Yes.
And has committed to, uh, working harder on this project, so...
Yes, and I heard too that there'd be no summer school, and, um, so I was thinking for the next school year, I'd probably do the same thing, and do something more with the youth, and, uh, so...
It's a good first...
Okay, one more question?
Yes.
I wonder if you could add one more question to those students, and say, how many of you would be willing to work to make some of this happen? So, if they would wanna be engrossed in getting an In-N-Out Burger here?
Mm-hmm.
Or getting better food in the schools, or bringing in a YMCA?
Yeah, I, I have a lot of, um, my other friends at school and stuff, that they are, excuse me, they're all working with me, too. Um, they're all helping me, taking their time, too, and helping me with this, too. I mean, I probably get about thirty, forty, maybe fifty kids that will send with me and help me with this, and, uh, and I talked to like six of them today, and they're like, you know, "I'm here to help you when you need me," so...
All right, so like if there are free, uh, concerts in the park, are there high schoolers that are part of the band that would wanna put together some of these free concerts?
Yes, I know they have, um, um, high school students that, that do pit on bands, that I heard from the principals and stuff, so...
Okay.
I know any more information about that, but...
Okay, great.
Michael, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, I've known Michael for a couple of years now, um, we were part of the Youth Development Coalition together, and, um, actually, I think part of what he would like is to, um, be a student advisory to the City Council, but he doesn't live in the city limits, is that right, Michael?
Yes.
Yeah, he lives in the county, so...
So, he's unofficially advising us.
He's, uh, yeah. Right, yeah, so...
Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael, for all your hard work.
Okay, we're gonna move on to general public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council's not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. For those of you... I'm not even done talking yet, Richard. For those of you that may be new to public comment, I think most of you have been here before, we have a light system. When you come to the podium, you state your name, whether you live in the city or the county, for the record, the green light comes on. When you have thirty seconds left, the yellow light comes on, and when your time is up, the light turns red. Is there any public comment?
Madam Mayor, if I may beforehand, uh, we're having technical difficulties with that one, so this is gonna be our light system, and it'll be right in front of my desk.
Okay?
Where is it? I'm gonna turn it on and then put it right here.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Miles?
Well, I'm gonna say this little speech, then go home, because I'll probably get thrown out again, and that's been kind of a habit of mine lately. Uh, today, I took something over to my police department and gave it to Donna, and I really hope my police chief had a chance to read it. Once he gets done with it, or if any of you want to stop by the health food store before Thursday, I'd hope you would get a copy of it. It has to do with a report from Humboldt County about a concept that I think that my city needs to start doing. It's called problem-oriented, ori... oriented policing. It shocked me last week, when I picked up the Daily Trippica, and realized in my own neighborhood, two blocks away from the police department was a growth house. And my question, when I first read the article, was how many years was that activity going on? It's just like the shoe store story. Well, some of us in this, uh, town realized months ago that blue smoke was oozing from the front door of that establishment. And if you grew up in the sixties, you know what blue smoke is, 'cause you used to set in dorm rooms. You don't...
No, I missed the sixties.
Okay. Before any money is given to the Chamber of Commerce, 'cause if we really want tourists to come here, we need to hire enough officers in our, the police department, so our youth don't become a bunch of potheads.
Thank you, Richard.
Well, it's on yellow.
Sorry.
So, I still got a little time, Kelly, and this, this problem goes back to the lipstick. And I'm gonna keep using the lipstick as my theme around here. If our community, and I remember a time, not too long ago, that Dennis and you attended a conference at the high school, it was about what was this community gonna do to fight drugs?
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Krista?
Good evening, everyone. Most of you know me, okay, everybody knows me, I'm Krista Norton, I live in the county, and I receive city ser- services, and I've been doing my own research, and I had a couple of questions in regards to this rollback, the sewer right rollback to 2007. If this succeeds, does that mean that everyone in the county gets it, too? It does. Okay, so, I live in the county, I don't pay for this. The city residents are gonna pay for all of this. They're gonna pay, you know, they're paying for all the, the costs to put this on the ballot, and the city residents vote for it, and if they pass, I get the rollback. But you know, I did find out this evening that the county's not gonna give any money to the city to help for that. So, it rolls completely onto the city. So, I'm just curious where that's gonna go. Um, should we be saying that this is part of the state and not the city anymore? Because when they're, when the city's bankrupt, the state will come over and take over on this, on the sewer system. Just FYI, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and move on to new business. Uh, consider a request, uh, from the Promote Our Pool Foundation to waive fees at the Cultural Center for, uh, the fundraising event, Suites by the Sea, held, uh, Saturday, June 26th. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I can't believe it's this time of year again, but the Promote Our Pool Foundation is just about ready to do their annual major fundraiser, which is Suites by the Sea. This year, it's going to be on June 26th, Saturday, June 26th, at the Cultural Center, and they have approached us, again, this year with a request to waive the rental fees at the Cultural Center for their event. The, uh, council subcommittee, ad hoc committee on cultural center fees, met recently, they've met twice now. Um, I was involved in this most recent meeting last Tuesday, we're getting very close to having a proposal ready to come back to the full council. We're not quite, we weren't quite there as of tonight, so we don't have those recommended changes to respond to this request. What we're suggesting, and the staff recommendation, is that you approve the waiver of the basic cultural center rental fees for the POP Foundation this year, uh, but that the foundation be required to pay the $180 cleaning fee, uh, to cover the cost of the professional cleaning after the event, and that would be consistent with what you did for the two events earlier this year, the, uh, Earth Arts Festival from the Solid Waste Authority, and the, uh, Bird in Nature Festival.
Mm-hmm.
So, this would be consistent with, uh, the council policy for those two events, um, you know, pending the approval of the, the full new rental policy. So, that would be our recommendation. I did notice that Mr. Mann, Peter Mann, Chairman or President of the, the POP Foundation Board is here this evening, so you may have questions for him as well, but, uh, that concludes my report.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this? Richard?
Look, Kelly, as you know, last time this come up, I said charge, um, fees. In this case, I'm not recommending that, because when these people put on this event, guess where the funds are gonna go back to? Unlike the birding thing and Earth Day, whatever funds these people raise, go back to the pool. For that reason, I'm suggesting that, that in this case, the city could easily carry the cleaning costs, and all the funds these people raise could go to our pool, because our pool, uh, is one of the items that benefit these young people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Do you have anything to add, Peter? We can bring that to you if you'd like to s...
As President of the POP Foundation, um, we'd like you to consider this, like, like he had said, the money that we raise, basically, all of it goes to the pool. I mean, there's some overhead, we've got insurance to buy and stuff, but everything else ends up benefiting the users of the pool, and that's why we put ourselves out front to be the POP Foundation, to make the pool bigger and better. So, I'd like you to consider it, um, and if, if he's right, they could do the, the cleaning deposit, too, that just means there's more to come at you guys.
We appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
For sure, thank you, looking forward to the event. Council, any questions for Mr. Butler?
So, how many laps do you have to swim if you have one of these wonderful dinners and desserts?
Yeah, I know, that's, depends on how big a piece of cheesecake you get.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I failed to recognize Mr. Nea wanted to comment.
Sorry, Rich.
It's okay.
Richard Nea, I'm a city resident, I'm also on the, uh, POP Committee Board. Um, one of the things I'd also like you to consider, some of that money that we use on our, that we raise, goes to groups that, uh, can't afford the passes that we give, and we give that away. The other thing is, that subcommittee that's meeting to determine rates, a lot of what some towns are doing... a lot of what some towns are doing now is there are new committees forming to help the city raise money in various ways. For example, POP is in our city right now to help support the pool. As, as the situation in Sacramento gets worse, you may find other groups forming grassroots committees to raise money that goes right back to the city for various programs. For example, programs in our parks, programs in our police department, programs in other things. And maybe we should have a section in that to say that if, if the money goes directly back to the city, that there are no fees. Or something, some wording to that, because that's something that's relatively new. POP has been around a few years, but other cities are starting to do that now. Citizens are supporting other things to help cities out to keep their programs going by having fundraiser. And it really doesn't make sense to charge them for the city building if all the money is going back to the city. Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you very much, is there any other public comment? Okay, we're gonna close public comment and bring it back to the council.
I'm fully supportive of this recommendation to have POP use the facility without charges, with the exception that I do think that it's appropriate to charge for the cleaning fees. I mean, part of the problem on the ad hoc committee that we've realized or been reminded about is that there's a $10,000 annual loss in the renting of the cultural facility. And so that's draining the city budget directly. So, to help offset the cleaning cost, I think is a fair equitable resolution.
Is that 20?
No, I think Mr. Slert is correct, it was, yeah, 10,000.
Okay. Catherine?
When it goes back, all the money goes directly to the pool?
Yeah, that's, that's certainly a policy discussion that the council can have. That might be something, a distinction you could make, you know, if, if the event is being used to raise funds exclusively for city services or facilities, you could certainly determine, we're not gonna charge anything for that. So staff's recommendation is just to go say no rental fee, but cleaning fee, especially now since we're using that contracted outside service to do the cleaning. We, we have to absorb that $180, but this is obviously one where the council can make the policy call.
I think that's my microphone. I, I have a comment. I think when we have organizations like POP, that their sole existence is to raise money for the pool. It's not a private enterprise. It's not a non, it is a nonprofit, but it's not to promote anything else in the community. There are no private investors here. For example, the Birding Festival had some private people, they're making a profit from that. Earth Day was a, it wasn't solely to provide money to the city. So I, I think if, if we charge 200 bucks for, to POP, that means we're not gonna get 200 bucks. Because, because POP is still gonna cover their charges. They're gonna pay for the cheesecake, they're gonna pay for their stationary, they're gonna pay for the dinner. So whatever profit they make is gonna eventually come to us, the pool, or people using the pool. So I really don't have a problem giving them the, even the cleaning money, because we're not gonna get that. They're gonna take that, they're gonna write that off. It's gonna be part of their net loss then, that they're gonna give back to the city. So we can either get less from POP, or we can promote POP and encourage them to, to do better. So I don't have a problem with this one, as far, as long as it's a, it's kind of standalone, it, all it does is promote the pool, doesn't do anything else. It's all it does. So, I, I, I don't have an issue giving them the rental, rental free conditions.
And I agree with Councilmember Burns.
Okay. Need a motion?
I move that we waive all fees for the Promote Our Pool Foundation event to be held June 26, 2010.
I'll second that. Okay, should we pull the vote?
Yeah, please.
Can you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Shalone?
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 11. Consider and approve a resolution entitled Resolution 2010 dash-
Zero eight.
Zero eight. A resolution for the City Council of Crescent City approving the application for nature education facility program funds. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, so recently State Parks announced it'll be a second round of funding through Proposition 84. It's gonna be $93 million available in the second round. This round of funding is available for nature education facilities and research. So, we had approached the Marine Mammal Center because we figured this would be a good candidate for some of this funding. Since their inception, they've wished to expand on their facility down there. They're looking at the-
Sorry.
No, it's okay. They're looking at expanding the facility, putting in an education facility and possibly revamping their facilities for the research part of it and for the mammals and the care part. I know Dr. Woods is here tonight, maybe he'd like to get up and say a few words about what they'd like to see down there.
Okay. Before we go on to public comment, Eric, can any of, can grant funding also be requested as part of the sports complex application? I know that I was approached by a, a Mr. Galea recently that said, just voiced his, his, I don't know if you would call them concerns, but just wanted us to be sure that we were aware that if we moved forward on that project, that there's a lot of biological work that may need to be done. And of course, that's what he does for a living, so let's just state that upfront.
Yeah, I received some emails from him too, we're very aware of that. And actually, that was, when we applied for that portion of the Prop 84 money, that was all taken into consideration. We, I padded that considerably for that cost, for all the Sequel and the biological analysis.
Okay.
That funding is already gonna be available.
Okay.
These are two separate, I mean, they, they can't be crossed over. Two separate funding sources. I mean, it's the same proposition, but they're for two-
Well, I was just thinking about, you had mentioned maybe a neat, like a nature, what did you call it?
Educational-
Interpretive-
The interpretive portion of the sports complex area.
Okay, the only part of that we had was really, it was for some wetland restoration. And we put that, we built that into that application. I think if you're thinking about the Nature Interpretive Center we're talking about, was actually gonna be at a separate piece of property. But since we were not able to get funding for that property, we kind of went this direction for this funding. We were, I was eyeballing this grant for that project, but you actually, there's, this project does not allow for any acquisition. It's only for construction.
Okay.
We didn't own that property, we weren't able to move forward, so. The Marine Mammal Center actually is a very viable candidate though for this funding. I think it would be a worthy project.
Mm-hmm.
And this, this application is good to up to $7 million with no, no match.
Great.
Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself because I'm actually helping the Marine Mammal Center on this project.
Okay. Thank you.
So basically we're here tonight, obviously to, if, to get, one, to get council approval to move forward this grant application. And as like I said, we have to have this resolution from the council to certify the approval of the grant application.
Okay, any other questions for Eric? Nope, any public comment? Mr. Wood?
Hi, I'm Dennis Wood, and I actually founded the Marine Mammal Center back in the early eighties. Just for brief history, we worked with the Board of Supervisors for offshore oil mitigation funds to build the center and worked with College of the Redwoods and the CCC. And part of our initial conception for the center was to have a marine mammal rehabilitation hospital. But then a large part of it, which had to be put off because of funds for building, was to have an educational auditorium, and that's a huge part of our mission, which we, we do realize to an extent. We do a tremendous amount of tours for schools, and we do a lot of outreach education. But we don't really have a facility for it, and being a rehab center, we have to limit public access. And so, when we were approached about this possibility, it's very exciting to us. And back in the early days when Daryl Maple was the city manager, the Marine Mammal Center was kind of a hub in the overall plan for development of the whole beachfront and such. And we foresee ourselves, if this came to fruition and we were able to build an auditorium and classrooms and such, as a place where tourists could come and could see video presentations of all areas of the county, not just promoting marine mammals, but the lighthouse and the Native American aspect of our county. So, I think there's tremendous abilities for us to really make it a nature center and also really promote the county, because, let's face it, that's what this county has to offer, is what we have here for nature. So, so we're really excited about the possibilities and excited about Charles' involvement as well, so.
Is there any possibility, sorry, is there any possibility of incorporating some College of the Redwoods level classes in marine mammal science? Or, I'm not sure if that's a topic, but-
Well, we, we've definitely, we've talked about that, and we're kind of in the early stages of, of planning what we're gonna propose for the grant. But definitely working with CR and High School Science Department as well.
Great, I would love that.
Grant's actually for nature, turf to facilities and marine laboratories, so it does, it falls right in there.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other, Mr. Miles?
Before his retirement, I had a long talk with our C-grant person. And Dr. Woods knows that Jim served on his board for a number of years. And still does, doesn't he, in some official capacity? I have a concern, and I just hope when Eric applies for this grant, that some of this money could be spent enlarging the care area for the number of pups, seal pups, that this center receives. Currently, that area is very small. When they get more than three animals in that area, the current layout, I personally believe isn't very big. And I believe that for a more humane treatment of the seal pups, that some of the pools should be enlarged and make the stay of those animals. When their volunteers help to bring them back to health. Because a stupid humans interfere, interfere with the life cycle when a mother, you know, says, "Go, go sit here and I'm gonna go out to sea and eat." But as humans intervene in the system and manhandle them, and then we call them to solve the problem. But one thing I wanna point out, that Jim has told me that sometimes nature should take its course with the number of animals that are abandoned each year. Some of that is a natural process. So I'm gonna sit down, and I'd hope you would consider not only the auditorium, but expanding the livable area for the seal pups. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close it and bring it back to the council.
I'd like to add something else real quick.
Oh, yes, please.
Also, part of doing this grant, the joint application with Marine Mammal Center is the city would also have some further involvement down line if we do get funding with actually helping see this project through. So there would be extra, you know, time put in. And obviously, Marine Mammal Center, once the project's completed, they would take over, obviously, running it and taking care of their facilities.
It's a good partnership. Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Discussion?
Oh, sure.
On, on the resolution, it talks about having sufficient funds to complete the project, and then also having sufficient funds to operate and maintain the project. So, so over the course of the Marine Mammal Center, right now, I know that it's sitting down there in the park, but in the event that the auditorium's added and there's not enough money to maintain it, who takes over the maintenance of that building?
Well, I'm saying that, that would fall back on Marine Mammal Center for their operation and care of the facility.
We're gonna be put on the grant, and we're certifying.
Yeah, I mean, that's how the grant will be written, that they'll be-
Okay, I want us to be clear on that.
So, that's a good point. Dennis, is your board able to put the resources forward to maintain and operate?
Yes.
I know, but I mean, the bigger facility. You'll make it happen? Okay.
It seems like this is a fabulous opportunity for the Marine Mammal Center and our county. It seemed possible leverage for some other funding down the road. If we were to get this, we could get some matching funds from maybe the state and then, I mean, not the state, state, but the national forests with parks-
Our state?
The parks and whatnot for some other kinds of leverage for funding down the road. So, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of potential for, I mean, the options, the opportunities seem just to be tremendous in my opinion. So I, I think this is a great opportunity for us. So I think this is really fabulous, actually, so.
Anything-
Make a motion.
Just a second, anything else?
Yeah, a couple of questions, Eric. Maybe two. Funding up to $7 million, how much are you going to apply for, do you have a figure in mind?
Not yet, we're still working out, I'm waiting to get the conceptual plan, and then we'll go from there. And it's a little different, this time's a little interesting, what they did is they made funding tiers. So that first round, everybody just kind of competed against everybody who applied. This time, you're gonna compete in a, they have a bracket, like, I think it was zero to 500,000, 500,000 up to a million and a half. So we'll actually be competing, wherever we ask for that funding, we'll compete at that level.
Okay, and in that auditorium idea, is the conceptual idea to have like films playing where some people can sit down and watch what's going on?
I believe so, but again, I'd have to put that part over onto Dr. Woods and let him explain that to you.
All right, okay.
Do you have any ideas on that?
You know what, actually, we have to, if we're gonna continue discussion, we have to have you come to the microphone. Has to be recorded. Thank you.
Make sure we get every word.
Yeah, that's right.
So, yeah, there's still a lot of the details to work out, but definitely having an auditorium where the public can come and sit and watch videos, and then separate classrooms. We're looking at possibly doing a upstairs boardroom observation type area that, you know, we might even be able to use for community events and such. So, we want it to be a drawing card where when a tourist is coming, you know, they see the North Coast Marine Mammal Center and, yeah, that's where I've gotta go to start my tour, because, you know, we're gonna get all the information on these different activities that are available.
All right, one more question. Will this create some full-time and part-time jobs, and if so, how many? Do you have any ideas yet?
I don't think we're that far along, but I'm sure that it will create some full-time jobs. Currently, we're operated strictly on a volunteer basis with a paid executive director. And, but we would love to have some full-time positions that are paid.
And obviously, jobs are created during the construction portion of the project. And what I'll add as far as for, you know, viewing the films and that, this grant will pay for all the equipment needed, like the video screens, players- pay for all the equipment needed, like the video screens, players, anything like that to cover that cost.
Great. Let's keep in mind that if for some reason this weren't to take place, we are going to have a facility at our wastewater treatment plant that's going to provide some high-tech capabilities. So because of your, you know, very close proximity, that may be a facility that you could use in the future. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Black?
Could I ask Mr. Taylor, how is the grant going to be structured? Who's going to be the applicant? Who's going to be the recipient and the grant administrator?
Right. The city would be the applicant, basically.
Well, that's what I just asked, because it says the applicant.
Well, it'd be a co-application, but we're taking the actual application, you know, forward. They'll be in, obviously, like I said, at the park. Well, they'll be in there as running the facility and maintaining the facility. It asks, you have to detail all that out into the grant.
Do you have some advice for him, or what's your thought process?
No, no, I just wanted to know because, because of Councilmember Slert's possible involvement. Just a question.
Well, I think it's a great idea to have the Marine Mammal Center, you know, expand its facilities and be more educational. I mean, already, it's widely used for the North Coast of California. The next one south is way down.
Especially with the front street plants.
Sure.
Beachfront park, I mean.
Yeah, it fits in well with what's going on down there.
Just keep in mind, these are competitive grants, so there's no guarantee.
I'm going to ask that you meet with Mr. Black very soon, just to make sure that Mr. Slert is protected and/or just figure out what he needs to do.
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2010-08 with the resolution approving the application for the Nature Educational Facility Program Funds to go to the Marine Mammal Center.
My second.
Okay. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
And Mayor Shalom?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to item number 12, we have a vacancy on our Joint Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Board. We usually try to encourage local city residents to be on this board. However, the only application we've received is from Millie Ratzloff, who is a county resident. But based on her resume, I think you'll all agree that she's quite capable. And just for the record, has experience with disabilities. Her own grandchild has disabilities. She has taught. She's developed three special education schools. And she has a very long resume.
That's for sure.
She's a very capable person and very involved in the community. So is there any questions from the council? Is she here?
No.
It would be nice to have a city person to be appointed by the council on this. But I also know that if we don't have somebody step up and want to do it, that it's, it's a vacant...
She's very active in the community. Mr. Butler, do you have anything, Dad?
Just going to add, we did invite Millie and Scott this evening. They're, as you know, they're one of their main, they do a lot of things, but their main bread and butter is they pastor Lighthouse Community Church out on the birch track. And I guess their congregation sent them on vacation to Yosemite for a week or two.
So they were not...
Yeah, they had to go. That's right. They, they were not able to make it tonight because of that. But she expressed her regrets and confirmed her ongoing interest. And she's been attending the meetings even ahead of her appointment, just to get up to speed on what's going on.
Great. Okay, any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council.
Well, they say if you want something done, ask a busy person, because it'll get her done.
I move that we approve the appointment of Millie Ratzloff to the Joint Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Commission.
My second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to item number 13, Mr. Slert, receiving and filing update on the costs related to Councilmember Westfall's information requests and legal actions. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Slert? It was your agenda item?
Actually, I do, Anna Mayor. I've requested on several occasions to have a full accounting for all costs associated with the various legal actions and/or recalls or initiative petitions that Ms. Westfall has sponsored over the past 18 months now. And I think that it's important that the taxpayers are the stakeholders here. And I think it's important that the stakeholders understand the costs associated with these various actions against our city. They're not for free. They have a serious price tag, I believe. And it's, I find it a little interesting that Ms. Westfall will claim, at least on the surface, that she's looking out for the interest of the taxpayers. But at the end of the day, with all these various legal actions against the city and/or recalls, to date, they have not resulted in anything constructive or productive for our city. In fact, it's cost us money. So I believe the taxpayers have a right to know what it's costing them. And Mr. Butler had put together this report, and it suggests that there's something like $66,000 plus over the past several months. And in particular, in just two, two-month periods, there's been something like $28,000 worth of expenses. And that's because there's more actions that have been taken, so it's requiring more efforts on the part of the city attorney and/or associated legal services. So I think it's important that the public knows. I would also mention that I think that these numbers are very conservative. I didn't see any time on the part of the Director of Public Works, Mr. Barnes, or the Assistant Engineer, Mr. Ware. And I think in the past 18 months, they must have been involved. So...
Mr. Slert, Director of Public Works is on all of these, as well as Assistant Engineer?
Well, there's...
Oh, that's just their rate. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry.
So anyway, the $66,000, I think, is a ultra-conservative number. And at the end of the day, I would ask that we consider giving a directive to the city manager and the staff to specifically line itemize all associated costs in the future so that we're not guesstimating it what it is, but actually reflecting the true cost to the citizens. $66,000 represents a serious amount of money, even if it is conservative. It represents valuable time and resources that have been spent on the part of various persons within the city. That money has actually been spent to move our city backwards instead of forwards. And because of our town hall meetings, we have a lot of goals and objectives. And unfortunately, we can't get to all of those, certainly in part because of the ongoing associated legal costs. The $66,000 represents a substantial...
Represents one full-time job?
A full-time job for a police sergeant, or would pay for a city hall master plan and have money left over, or it'd be two-thirds of a visitor bureau commitment. So even at the conservative number, it's a substantial number. And I think it's important that you reflect back to the recent editorial in the triplicate paper that did a survey and indicated that the citizens of the city, at something like 39%, and the joint city and county citizens that responded, at something like 43%, were unhappy with the direction that the city is taking. And I think the negative response regarding the direction of the city has to do with the recalls that have been mounted, and also, I think, the sewer initiatives. And then when 81% specifically have indicated a dislike for our colleague, Ms. Westfall, I think there's a clear message there. And I would ask her to seriously consider stopping the mindless and wasteful, or wasteful continued expenditures that are costing the city and the taxpayers, the stakeholders. Thank you.
You're welcome. You have anything, Dad?
No, I think Councilmember Slert did quite add...
Said it all. Anything, Donna?
Yes, I have a few things to say about that. I'm glad to see that Councilmember Slert is thoughtful of the taxpayers' money. And while he recites $66,000 that I've caused in expenses, I'll remind him that he approved $5,511,000 through the one, over 1.2 million in additional money on the sewer, 100,000 of the visitors bureau, adding 4 million net to the loan, 55,000 for the lieutenant's position, plus none of you four were interested in saving 17,000 a year by removing industrial waste-grade fluoride from our drinking water. Now, it's an appropriate time to start talking about corruption, because that's one of the reasons that I ran for City Council. And in your information, you put that some of these items include public records requests. One of those was regarding the subcontractors that was falsifying payroll and not paying overtime. And we just found out that Colburn Electric was released by the state and paid 118,000 in wages and penalties to the state on Friday in May. This is in addition to the wages that Colburn paid his workers for overtime after he made out a complaint. This is from Pat Wirsing, compliance officer with the NCECI Electrical Union. Also, Colburn, on his counsel advice, paid over 150,000 in wages after they filed the complaint. The penalty portion of the overtime violations were not reduced. Now, I'd already read the chapter and verse about penalties coming to the state, but Ward Stover, who got paid $9,000 to do labor compliance and didn't do his job, I don't know where that penalty portion is going. So that's a question to ask. And it wasn't just Colburn Electric, but it was also Maple's Plumbing. And that's called corruption. Plus, Ward Stover was in front of us, telling us that he did have one unlicensed electrician on the job, which puts it in jeopardy and creates potential liability. So while you cite that I spent the city, or it cost the city $66,000, I've already pointed out that I could have saved the city far more if people who were hired did their due diligence and did their job. Also, because of the censure, you felt that it wasn't appropriate to talk about the illegal rate increases since 1997 as an agenda item. So at this time, I'm going to hand in a public records request, asking for the information from August 1, 1997 to August 1, 1999, when sewer rates were increased illegally, and wanting to know how much money was collected, if you can provide proof of the 218 process it went through, if you can show me where the money went from that rate increase. Did it go in the sewer fund or the general ledger? How is that money spent? How much did it cost to operate the sewer plant during those years? Do you want it, or shall I give it to Robin? Okay. There are other issues with this city. Something as minor as streetlights. We've had dozens and dozens of streetlights out for years, and our taxpayers are paying for that. So there are little pockets of corruption here and there. And these things need to be addressed so that the people get what they're paying for. Thank you.
Donna, if you'd pay attention to your budget, you'd say that we put money in the budget just recently to take care of streetlights.
What about two and three years ago? This is not a new thing. This has been going on for years.
Streetlights go out all the time. We have very severe weather on the, on the west coast. Streetlights go out all the time. Happens in every city on the coast. Thank you for voting to have more police, law enforcement to protect our citizens. I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
I'd like, I'd like to just ask you, Donna, since you took your constituents' time to start four recalls against us, why you never followed through. It seems to me you're just wasting people's time once again.
I'd rather not comment on it right now.
I'm sure that you wouldn't. Once again, she filed four recalls against us, went out, has taken more of our, our time, residents' time, taxpayers' money, and then fails to file them on time. So basically, you have to start over.
Sewer rate initiative is going forward. We've already got our required signatures, so we'll be handing that in this week.
We're very aware of that.
Okay.
So just for the public's information, estimate of time, just with our city attorney in the last February and March, was about $7,500. Staff time was $4,200 for those two months. Our bill from the county clerk for Donna's initiative and recalls was $2,200. And all of that money was just accumulated in two months.
Engineering consultant.
Yeah, engineering consultant time, almost $8,000.
I have a couple comments.
Sure.
One is, I think it's been said again and again and again, removing fluoride from the water is not a city council option. It's a voter option.
No, actually, you're incorrect.
Excuse me, Donna, I did not interrupt you when you were talking. Thank you. Removing fluoride is, is up to the voters. And if they wish to have it removed, then obviously they're going to get to vote on that. That's hardly corruption. And I think dozens of streetlights out is hardly corruption. It deals more with people, jobs, and time to do those. And I believe, maybe I'm wrong, but Rod and Bob, did Ward Stover not find the issue with the electrical, wasn't, didn't the city bring that to the light?
We certainly followed up on it once it became known to...
Wasn't that a wall in construction and a labor issue? Didn't deal with the city? That was his issue, not ours.
That's right.
So that's not a city corruption issue. That is a wall in construction issue. When the electricians wanted to work 410s, and they were trying to accommodate the needs of people working out of town, the electricians themselves wanted to work 410s. That wasn't anybody trying to do anything. That was accommodating the needs of workers.
Well, that would mean that she would have to have some common sense, which doesn't seem to exist. Anything else? Anything else, Council? Is there any public comment? Mr. Miles?
I think Donna's trying to say something.
No, I'm opening this up for public comment. Would you like to comment?
Well, I have to laugh. And I really mean laugh. Many of you are not students of the French Revolution. And I think you should be, because what I'm seeing is a prime example of the court of Louis XV. And we may have an example of Marion Antoinette, let her eat cake on Donna's part. Instead of really dealing with a number of issues that face my city, that, per the time she took her oath of office, nothing in my city has really been accomplished. Also, it's my belief, and I think a gentleman in this room who's trying to bring development here, that my city has become laughing stock, the north coast. Now, not all the blame can go to Donna. It really can't. Because there's been four of you who could have censored her early on, when she started all of this, with her pirate costume and her sword. But that didn't happen. I have to say this, honestly. My city is getting to the point that it's an embarrassment. Instead of moving ahead for the good of our youth, to create jobs, and I want to remind something of Donna, guess who, along with her wonderful mayor, brought an issue to the budget hearings? And guess who found extra money in a fund? So my street department, who only have two people that are qualified to run our boom and replace our lights, can start replacing our lights? Because the city came up with more money. I spoke to one of them the other day, who is patching our streets. I would hope Donna would realize that all the money she has wasted could have hired another person in our street department, so another person could be assigned to put up streetlights. But Donna doesn't realize this, because she's an airhead.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close this and move on to item fourteen. Receive report on Town Hall discussion regarding Front Street's future, Mr. Arns. In light of the negativity, we're going to move on to more positive subject, which is the outcome, one of the outcomes from our Town Hall meeting, and that is the future of Front Street. We have taken, we've had several public meetings where we've taken public input, and we're having another one. I'd like to remind you all that you're invited this Thursday at six p.m. at the Washington Fire Hall to receive more public input on Front Street construction. And, but tonight, I've asked Rod to provide us with a summary of the input received during our April tenth Town Hall meeting. Just, we're just doing Front Street tonight, and then in June, we will follow up with our other two Town Hall roundtables.
Okay. What I put together is a little PowerPoint on Front Street, and I wanted to review a little bit, some of the history of Front Street, and what brought us to the workshop we had on April tenth, and then some of what we have planned to take us to construction. And I wanted to show you a picture of Fourth of July, nineteen fifteen. Why is that important?
That's Front Street.
That's Front Street.
That's very cool.
Well, what you see there is the, a lot of commercial buildings at that time. And you see a narrower Front Street. But at that point in time, you also see that the people that used Front Street were mostly pedestrians, and you see covered pedestrian walkways, because people didn't have cars. And so, and you don't see much parking. And the streets are a little smoother than they are along Front Street now. But generally, it's, if you really think about it, you get, you look at Front Street, you look all the way down Front Street, and you see that it was a much busier, more commercial street at that point in time. And that was about a hundred years ago. And I look back, and about half that long ago...
You look back to nineteen fifteen?
I do. I look back about half that long ago, and my brother and I, my dad was about Eric Rears' age, and my brother and I were in the Front Street Parade on the Fourth of July. And it's a little hard to believe when you get perspective like that, that between now and then, half that time ago, that I would have been in that parade on the Fourth of July. And Front Street at that time was probably much like it is today, except Front Street, like Howe Drive, you would go out on the, you'd look out at the beach, and you would go out, and we would go out and play in the sand, and you'd sit along Front Street and have your lunch. And you'd look out at the waves, and it was more like that. And so, the point I'm trying to make is not just to reminisce, but the point I'm making is, your street, and what you do along the edges of the street dictates the kind of street you have, and the walkways that you use, and what the street's used for, and the way you set the street up. And so, as we go into the design of a street, you have to look at the surroundings and the environs of the street. And so, that's very important. And so, this old picture is not just an old picture. It kind of sets up what we're looking for when we go into the design of a street. And so, back in two thousand and five, a design firm was hired by Altico. They held two workshops. The first was to kind of get an idea of what kind of a street should we do, and then the second, and I think some of you were there for that first workshop, and maybe for both workshops, I don't know. And then, they further defined, refined their design, and at the second workshop, and they came up with a final product. They put a cost estimate of about three million dollars together. And they came up with this, what they called the Preferred Plan. I'm going to go to the next, I'll come back to this, but, and for this, I'm going to put my glasses on. But what we have in this Preferred Plan is a, as you can see here, you have one lane in each direction with a turn lane. You have diagonal parking along the park side, which is the south side. You have parallel parking on the other side, and what they call bumpouts, which are raised, landscaped areas, raised islands with landscaping along where the parking is. And then, we have defined walkways across, at each of the areas, for crosswalks. And we, those popouts shorten the walkways to about seventy-six feet, where they were, but seventy-eight feet, where they were about a hundred and six feet before. One of the biggest problems was unsafe walking distances across Front Street. It shortens those to a hun, or seventy-eight feet from a hundred and six feet. Now, we increased the number of parking spaces. I don't remember to how many, but it increases it quite a few. And then, you can see, we, by narrowing the street, it also slows the traffic down. When you have a real wide street, it tends to, people tend to just go faster. And also, we put in a four-way stop. That was the suggestion. I'm going to, I handed a questionnaire out at our meeting on April tenth, and I have seven or eight questions that I asked, and I'm going to give you the results of that questionnaire, show you the results at the end of this little presentation I'm making now, and I'll show you exactly how people felt about different things here. And so, you see some of the design features here. One more feature, I'm going to go back here. If you can see, right where I have the word "Front Street," kind of on the left-hand crosswalk there on H Street, you can see the cross section that's A there. That's that cross section. So you can see what the landscaping looks like through that cross section. All right, I'm going to go back two slides, and this was the Preferred Plan. I'm going to start at the far right-hand side and show you some of the features, although this is a little hard to see. This at L Street, they added a traffic signal? No, let me see. At M Street, they added a traffic signal. There's one at L Street already. And they also added at L Street the capability of a vehicle connection, which allows a person to kind of make a U-turn and come back to Front Street. As you move to the west, you can see that they have put in several crosswalks, and they use stamped concrete or a colored stamped asphalt to define the crosswalks. And what that does, it slows the traffic down, and also, it is decorative, and it just helps define the crosswalks. You can see all along here, you have a walkway on one side, bike lanes on both sides, in the travelway. I'm going to back up once. Right inside the parking, between the parking and the travelway, on both these pictures, you'll see there's a bike lane. And then, you also have, both your sidewalks also provide pedestrian ways. Then, we have the four-way stop at H Street, and then you just keep going, and you see the diagonal parking all the way along the south side. And then, as you come to Second Street, we put in a large, well, before you get to Second Street, all the way between, well, not Second Street, that would be B Street. Between D and B, we widened the street so that it's the same width throughout that whole section. So we widened that whole section, so the street maintains the same width. As you know now, at the transfer station, how it narrows down, we maintain the same width through that whole section. Then, at B Street, we put in a large feature and a roundabout to exhibit that feature. And that roundabout would have directional signage to take one to the Pebble Beach Drive, to the B Street Pier, and out to the lighthouse. So all those features are kind of defined in this Preferred Plan.
And this is the Preferred based on the most input at our Town Hall?
No, this was...
Or this is the original workshop?
The Preferred Plan that was done by the consultant at the two thousand and five.
Okay.
So we handed the questionnaire out at the April tenth meeting, and these were basically as a result of that plan. And let me go down to the raised medians, which is the second question. And basically, this was always one of those controversial questions, because most of the old-time residents of Crescent City, if you talk to those residents, this issue is the one that they, they do not like raised medians in the street. They like a wide street. And they are most fiery about that issue. And if you look here, it's pretty split. The new residents like the raised median with landscaping. The old residents like the wide street. If you looked at the plan, that's the Preferred Plan, it does not have a raised median. It left the median...
Well, I think part of the problem is that, for instance, when you drive down North Crest Drive, and you have a raised median with a bunch of rock and three-foot-high weeds that aren't ever pulled...
That's part of the, I mean, there's probably a lot of reasons.
People don't want something that's going to be new and beautiful to not be taken care of.
No, but the main reason is the parade, Fourth of July Parade.
And I think they're just, when you have something for a hundred years, it becomes part of the culture.
Yeah. At the Fourth of July Parade, I remember the two thousand and five meetings, and the raised median would ruin the parade.
It would ruin it?
Yeah, it would ruin the Fourth of July Parade.
Right. Another reason for the raised medians, as I recall, was the width of Front Street. When it was a hundred-plus feet, they wanted a raised median for pedestrians. But if we do the bumpouts and the parking parallel and perpendicular parking, that narrows that street, so the, when the people have to get across the street, and especially put a four-way stop there, it'll really alleviate some of that reason for a raised median.
So as you see, for the rest of the items, the bumpouts and landscaping, twenty-eight to four, diagonal parking, twenty-six to two, which was kind of surprising, the return access to Highway one oh one, twenty to one, stop signs at H Street, twenty-three to eleven, widen the west end, twenty-three to four, roundabout at B Street, twenty-seven to one. All of those, I mean, there's really, other than the stop sign, which I think is a good idea, not only does it slow down the traffic, it gives you a very, when you have a stop sign, the pedestrians are much safer. There's really no reason not to put a stop sign there at H Street. As a traffic engineer, I think you should do that. It just makes sense. But as you can see, all the rest of these items are really not controversial, just the raised median. So when we did the Preferred Plan, it, that's why they basically came up with that plan. It seemed to be the best plan for what people wanted. And so, that's kind of how it came, that's why we ended up with that plan. And as I handed out the questionnaire at the April tenth meeting, that's, that seemed to be reinforced through that meeting. But anyway, what we're going to do, as we, upcoming events, we have the workshop on the twentieth, which is this Thursday, at the Washington Street Fire Station. That's going to be at six o'clock. What we're going to do is have some additional exhibits. We're going to discuss everybody's ideas that's there, and then try to define exactly what we want to do for our conceptual design. Then, we're going to request funds from Altico to do the actual design of this street. When we get those funds, then we're going to go out through an RFP, a Request for Proposal, to design firms. for two design firms. Hire a design firm, get the designs done, and along with the design, we'll get some cost estimates and then we'll go out and try to find some funding. And then when we get the funding, we'll try to get it built.
Great.
Altico seems to be in the mood to get us the funds, so I don't know why we couldn't move ahead.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
I would just clarify, Mr. Barnes, a big part, component of the overall improvements of Front Street is going to be the redoing the structural base for Front Street, right?
There is, on any street, there's what you see and there's what you don't see. And what you don't see on Front Street is the pipes, the structure underneath. And when you have a street as old as this, I understand there's some logs and there's some different things that we have to deal with. And so, yeah, there's a lot of that. We're starting to deal with some of the pipes. And so, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's an important point to make because as most people would understand, when you go out to bid, they're going to bid on what they can see. And so it's very important that they know that there's, you know, there's going to be some things they're going to have to deal with when they start digging up the ground, and that may increase the cost, just like the polluted soil at the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
You do your best guess estimate, but once you actually start digging, then you, you know, when you find more than what the original estimate is, then you have to pay for that.
Well, there's, what you're saying is true, Kelly. There's two things involved. Number one is there's things that you, that you don't see that you know. And then there's things that you don't see that you don't know. Because people have done things over the last 100 years that you're unaware of. And as they start digging and so on, that you become aware of, that you have to start dealing with it.
You know, he may find, instead of old redwood logs and down there, he may find all those captain's chests full of the balloons that they put there back in the-
That's exactly-
You know, and it may pay for itself.
Yeah.
But that's probably not.
Yeah, you can only wish. Okay. Is there any public comment? Mr. Ania?
Just like to make a quick comment, Richard Ania, Crescent City resident. I did attend those two meetings in 2005 with Catherine. And the public was really enthused, just like they were April 10th, I was there. And then, after that, everyone thought, or the public anyway, thought that we were going to start that the next week. And I was on the council at that time, and it didn't happen like that. So we have to be careful because we'll go through all this and we may not find the funding. So it's five years later, we haven't found the funding for the five, and you can see, five years later, the public is the same on what should be done with the Front Street, just like Jim did before and Will Kaplanjer did that. But that doesn't mean we're going to have the money and it may take five more years. So I'd just be cautious about people thinking that it's going to happen overnight because it hasn't. And we're just hoping that the money's there because it would be nice to do that street. But it's been five years and we haven't found the money yet. So I'm hoping this time we do find the money. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment?
Seeing none, we'll bring this back. No action this evening. I just asked to have this report for our information. I know that someone stopped me the other day and they said, "Are you guys really re-striping Front Street?" And I said, "Well, here's the deal. We have 150 city blocks that are being micro-surfaced. While the company's here, they're trying to, you know, make it a little smoother. But really, the plan is to reconstruct the entire street. And by the way, you're invited to attend our meeting on May 20th. So if Leroy Bieber doesn't show up, give him a call."
Can I report on the micro-surfacing?
Please do.
We, as you know, we've taken all the striping off the streets. So it appears that we just don't have the money to stripe the streets anymore in Crescent City. But that's actually not the case. What is, is they were planning on starting the micro-surfacing this week.
Guess what's going to happen the next two weeks?
Rain.
But the weather has deterred that work. Until it clears up and gets warmer, they can't work. So we've just got to wait until things get better. We thought it was going to be nicer than it is. So that's the way it is.
What's the weather forecast?
Well, it doesn't look good for the next week and a half. They were supposed to start today.
But some of those new stop signs where they've grounded out makes great traction. The roads are not slick.
All right, thank you.
You gotta look at the positive side of this.
Thanks for that report, Jim. Appreciate it. Look forward to hearing what the public has to say about Front Street on Thursday as well. Hear a report back. Okay. Once again, I think the town hall process has really benefited this council in decision-making, the decision-making process. Okay, we are done with business and I'm going to have us out of here. Do we have any legislative matters?
No, Mayor, we-
Good answer.
Yeah.
Any reports return? I'm just teasing you. Reports, concerns, referrals, council, travel training, Mr. Slert?
The only thing I have, Madam Mayor, is I attended the Elkhorn Ranch Ad-Hoc Committee with yourself last week and they continue to proceed forward.
Okay.
That's all.
Catherine?
No, just attended our budget meeting last Monday night.
Thank you. Ms. Westfall?
Yes, three things. One, I learned recently that the city council 40 years ago put fluoride in the water without public approval and without public vote. So that was very interesting, which means that we, as a council, could have done the same to take it out.
Wait, 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 explain that.
I'll be happy to bring in the paperwork showing, proving that.
It went to the voters. It did go to the voters.
Not initially.
Not initially, but it went to the voters.
Four years ago?
Forty.
In the 60s.
Oh, forty, yeah. It did go to the voters in the 60s.
Yeah, but initially, the city council put it in the water without it going to vote. That's what we discovered. Secondly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rod, but Ward Stover's contract is with the city, not with Walland, correct?
That's true.
All right. So when I said that-
This is regarding reports-
And concerns.
But not new business.
Okay. And that's all I want to say.
Okay. Dennis?
It's interesting to note that Solid Waste is moving forward with the franchise agreement for collections of the three, we had three bidders come, Recology, Ambro, and an organization out of Willets. They gave very nice presentations at the last Solid Waste Authority meeting. And it'll be interesting the next couple months to award a franchise. Then they'll have about a year to gear up to provide collection services for the county.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Well, I'm actually sitting on the ad hoc committee for Solid Waste and working through the initial assessments of all three bidders' proposals. And it's very interesting. One of the things that I wanted to make clear to our city residents, because I think it's a piece of education that needs to be out there, is that even if it doesn't matter who we choose, whether it's the Willets firm, Recology, or Ambro, rates will go up. And the reason for that is that when we entered into our franchise agreement 15, almost 15 years ago, we are still paying the same rates that we contracted for 15 years ago with the cost of living increases along the way.
Don't forget gas going up just a tad.
Yeah, exactly. So what you, what we will see as rates, no matter who is chosen, is the market rate. And so it's, I just want people to be aware of that because, you know, I don't want people to, I don't want it to come out of left field when there's a new franchise and their rates go up. Keep in mind that even though the rates go up, our services are going to be extremely broadened and the public will have a much better ability to recycle, not just cans and glass and paper, but also organics, organic waste. You'll actually be able to have the three cans at your house for garbage, recycling, and organic waste. So a lot more services, which will be nice to choose from. Let's see, went to the art walk, was awesome Friday night. Downtown was alive, it was a very, very nice feeling. And I think all the shops were open, so it was, people were spending money, it was just a really nice evening. Went to the mural dedication on Ninth Street for the Illusion Goose painting with Kathleen Creasa, who painted a beautiful artistic rendering of the Castle Rock and Illusion Goose. And so I was able to do a little speech thereafter. Bob Cochran started it off with a remembrance of how it all came about. Wanted to invite people, June 1st, Lieutenant Governor Abel Maldonado will be here and will be at RHS at 7:00 a.m., for those of you that are interested in meeting him. And he's, I'm not sure if we've ever had a lieutenant governor here, but he was just appointed a couple weeks back and has already planned a trip here and is interested in what our north coast interests are. So I think that's a really positive thing. Went to the Bird and Nature Festival, went to the kickoff evening and was their guest speaker to welcome the tourists. And that was, that was a really nice event. And then the following night, went to their gala out in Smith River. And about 150, 200 people there, it was a really nice event. They did a really great job. They had a wonderful silent auction and about 10 wineries and all kinds of local foods, from Romeo cheese to food products out of Trinidad and Arcata. Very regional event, which was a really nice touch. Charles and I are on the ad hoc committee for the cultural center fees and we just wanted to make sure you knew we had that meeting and discussed those rates with staff and really took a hard look at them. And so Mr. Butler will be coming back with some recommendations for the council to consider. June 3rd, we have our new VA clinic grand opening out at 1575 South Railroad Avenue, if anyone's interested in that, attending. I think, oh, I'm, I think being the mayor of a city is a tremendous honor, but it's getting a little out of hand. I have to go pitch, the first pitch on opening day of Little League this weekend. My son's making me. Because he said, "Mom, if you don't make it over home plate, I'm going to be so embarrassed." I said, "If I don't make it over home plate, I'm not going to show my face around this, this little city." Anyway, I'm actually excited to get to ride on the fire truck with all the T-ballers, so it'll be fun. And then the last thing is, I just wanted to bring something up to the council that was requested of me. And that is, there is a gentleman who has recently moved here, or is trying to retire here, he and his family, and they are starting a second car show. It's going to take place on July 3rd at the Fairgrounds. And he also has a tremendous collection of historical documents that are invaluable. And he is going to open the Arts and Crafts Building during the car show as a historical center. And he has asked the county and now the city to do a historical display on our history of the city of Crescent City. So I'd love to have that picture of Front Street as part of it. And I've already started talking to a few people about some historical, like for instance, Local Roots is a new salon down on Third Street. The Davis family, been here for, you know, 150 years, and they have pictures of downtown Crescent City and Second Street back in the day. And they've told me that I could use those photos. I feel safe doing that because he's going to have armed guards there because I guess the documents that he has are so valuable. Like, I think he said he, like, has, like, the newspaper from when, like, Hitler was killed and all, all kinds of stuff. So he wants to make it more than just a car show. He's going to have activities for the kids and vendors and all kinds of stuff happening. So that'll be happening on July 3rd and they're going to be done in time for the deck party. So just another event, next year, he did it, they're doing it this year because they want to just have it, be able to attract as many people as they can that are already here to see what they're going to have to offer. He has a huge collection of antique cars. And so he obviously has a big draw of people that he does antique carrying with. I'm not sure if that's what, what you would call it. But, but next year, they'll have it on a different weekend so that they can use it as a tourist draw for the city. So I think it's a great event and I just kind of wanted to get your feedback and then I'm going to delegate. We don't have to man the booth, it's just going to be more of a display, but a chance to show off Crescent City and our, and our history. So.
Just about the RE/MAX signage down on the old liquor store. You all have to know, because of that balloon issue, that RE/MAX balloon that I assured Susie at RE/MAX, that the balloon is still there. It's just on the other side of Castle Rock and it's below the horizon. So the balloon is still there.
Singing in the sunset.
That's right. That's what the pink glow is, it's reflecting off the balloon.
Yes. Okay. We are going to adjourn this meeting to tomorrow night. We are having a Crescent Fire Protection District Board meeting, joint meeting with the city council at 6:00 p.m. Meeting adjourned, thank you.